Everybody's here to just start or wait just a few more minutes. Okay, guys, since everybody's present, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Mr. Gillpatrick, can you hear us?
Yes.
All right, you'll be leading our open session moment of silence, and I'll be followed by Mr. Wayne Taylor with a pledge of allegiance.
Hey, y'all will join me in the moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number four here, we have the approval of the minutes from September the eighth of 2020. Those who were not supplied in the board packet, you should have got them tonight, so if anybody needs a minute to look over those before there's a motion or a vote on those, I just saw one error that needed to be corrected, is all I found.
What was that error?
Uh, number four, the, uh, number four of last month, which was the Girl Scout presentation. Maybe not with us, that was deletion, that was made. I'll make a motion if I have.
I second.
Have a motion by my case to approve the four minutes minutes. And a second by William Epstein, any other discussion on this? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now our board minutes, while we're discussing that, our policy is those are to be sent out with the packets. So far, this is the first time this year we've had these to visually see before they were voted on, so I'll try my best to make sure those are in that packet moving forward. Number five, any additions or deletions to the proposed agenda?
Hey, I'd like to add, consider taking bids for the central heat and air for the LA baseball building. I've had a couple of calls this last couple of weeks about that, and they say when they go in there, we do back practice in the winter in January, that it's cold and they have no heat, and I told them that until we got the number to look at it, we couldn't do anything, but I'd just like to look and take bids and see what does going to pass.
Can we add that to the consent agenda? We have a motion by my case to add taking a bid.
I second that motion.
On repeat, at LA Baseball Fieldhouse. My case and a second by Ricky Dodson. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You guys have had to give me here, I take a lot of notes, so it takes me just a few minutes. Number six, approval of the October sixth, 2020 meeting agenda. Do I have a motion for that?
I'll make that motion, second.
Motion by Ricky Dodson and a second by Mitchell Stomps. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First item on the agenda, executive action items, is considered as contracted by the Director of Schools. As everybody knows, we have two new board members. This information has been provided to them, everyone else. You guys need to discuss something outside? All of us, do you need to take a break?
I don't know, I can't see.
The recess.
It's not everything's gray.
True. You guys will be in recess.
Yeah, that helps.
You sure?
Yeah, that helps.
We'll recess if you want. Wait a few minutes if you need.
I'm ready.
You good?
I usually never meet again.
As I was saying, our new board members, this information was sent to them, so it's in your packet for we'll review it, go over it, that way everybody understands, and I'm not going to read it word for word, we'll just if anybody's got any questions, we'll go over them aggressively, we'll hit the high spots. The first, first section is the term of the contract, which is the dates that it occurs. Second's the professional certification, which is certification that we require and the state requires for the Director of Schools. Third is the duties of the Director of Schools. Anyone that hasn't read TCA forty-nine, two, three, oh, one, I urge you to do that. That pertains to all applicable laws that are under the duty of the Director. Says the Director will follow all policies, procedures set forth by the Board, budgeting, it addresses all those issues. Five-year work plan is in this duty section, we'll discuss that later. Compensation, it was approved by the Board, compensation of eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars, which is, I don't know if that is the state standard or not now, where it's changed. Insurance benefits, which include medical and life insurance as per Board policy. Professional liability, we provide professional liability for all employees. This is a two-hundred-and-sixty-day contract. I mean, it's, our Board policy lines that out, anybody has any questions about that, please refer to that. Sick leave, same, pertains to that. Expenses, it lines out what expenses will be incurred by the Board, if any, that are due to the Director. Membership dues, we do face membership dues, or I believe TOS, is that correct? Do you know if any others off the top of your head?
There's one other. That's, that's a board, but there's a superintendent that we do that here.
Okay, professional growth, anybody has any questions on that? The school system provides and requires that the Director attend professional meetings. Medical examinations, if anybody has any questions on that, it says the Board can which at the cost of the Board can do, have a medical or mental evaluation. The renewal of the contract, unless the Board acts on the first day of April twenty-twenty, which is three months before the end of this contract, that's notice the Director that does not, the Board does not intend to renew the contract. This contract took effect July the first. It says the Director shall assume the responsibilities July the first, which is the school year, which is which is contracted through professional, I'm trying to think the correct way to say this, all of our professional employees are contracted July the first to July the thirtieth, end of the next year. This contract actually took effect the first day of February two thousand and eighteen. Performance evaluation, under these performance evaluations, these are not a must-do. These are just markers to gauge performance on our annual Director evaluation, which we do in April. This past April of COVID, I don't believe those were completed, because I don't know that any were turned in correctly. I don't remember if it was April when we set aside our policies or March, but that's why it was not done. These performance evaluations, weekly texts, phone call, email, high priority events should be done, so it's practical. Administer and force the approved budget by the Board. Seek to reduce the level of one and two teachers across the district, which that's just for educational purposes, to maintain high-quality teachers. The Director shall take necessary steps to prove that schools are at level three or above. Right now, we're not maintaining that, so at the point of two consecutive years, there'll be a probationary period, a one-year probationary period. If they raise those scores, may result in unilateral termination of contract in accordance with their cause. So with this taking effect February the eighteenth, this past school year would be the probationary period. So this school year will be that. That will be pending on that. We adopted a ninety percent reading goal, we've done that as a board back several years ago, three, four years ago. The only, when this contract was extended, the only change was work to improve the pre-aid through second grade technology, community involvement, back to school badge, that type thing, newspapers, all that, all that types of maintain, continue search for funding, refine and enhance technology in the classroom, and shall continue to promote STEAM certification for leadership academy, to the first certification by the end of nineteen-twenty school year. Like I said, those are not must-dos, those are just for the annual evaluations. Referrals to the Directors, any board members that have any complaints that come from the public, parents, students, employees, they're to be referred to the Director. However, you see fit to handle that, I usually do an email, that way it's tractable. Or begs, you go however you feel, but collectively or individually, you go to the board meeting however, but those go to the Director. Loyalty clause, the Director should devote all time and energies to the school system. Board does allow for speaking engagements and consulting work, as long as the Board feels it doesn't interfere with his duties here. And it says that this document supersedes any document that was previous, so this was the extension for Dr. Whittingham's first contract. Disability, it just says if Dr. Whittingham cannot physically or mentally perform duties, he can be released under that reason. Contract termination, if there's mutual agreement between parties for cause, if there is, it says sufficient proof of improper conduct, inefficient service, or another collective duties. This item C is a unilateral removal of the Board, it says a two-thirds supermajority. I believe that is incorrect, there is actually a law that there is a law that says that you cannot put a supermajority restriction on any of the voting, so unless, unless anybody wants to change that, we'll, everybody's under the understanding it's probably incorrect in Board, is that correct? Dr. Whittingham?
I think that's correct.
Then removal from office, if the Director, for whatever reason, license were revoked or suspended, or just ran out of date, just says if there's any provisions in Title forty-nine, Chapter one, or transfer, the Board has option to transfer to different to any other position in the school system at the Director's rate of labor duration of this contract. Now, if there are any amendments, if the Board felt there need to be any amendments, this contract, it has to be done in writing. There'll be no oral agreement between the Board or the Director, it has to be done in writing, and that's, that's our entire contractual agreement. So if anybody has any questions on that, or feels that anything needs to be changed, to my knowledge, number C is the only thing that needs to be changed, but unless the Board wants to go through that process and regrabs, or just have it re I guess removed, item C out of that, but right now, everybody's in the understanding, so it doesn't matter. Do you might have any questions or comments?
Yeah, in regards to the five-year plan, so the Director of School acts as a resource for the Board in developing that five-year plan, and also, also the executioner of that five-year plan, is that correct?
He is the executioner, that is correct. What we do collectively, as a Board with the Director, we sit down, we go over that five-year plan, we, well, first off, we develop a five-year plan, put it into writing, that is, the Director, as you said, executes, it's, to my knowledge, sent out to all the supervisors for them to execute their part, because they are, they do have some responsibilities in that as well.
And we review it every year, it's reviewed annually?
And it's a working document, so, you know, things we put in, if we put in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, you know, that could change twenty-one, you know, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, you know, based on state mandates, or things that come down, or funding available to, you know, fund certain things, and, you know, that's why yearly, it should be reviewed and updated and continue to be a working document, so.
And then one other point on this is, it says that the school will be rated at a level three. What was the last level before they stopped doing the testing?
The, okay, before this contract, the Board recognized the system as a whole. The Director and the supervisors broke down the schools and went through their interventions. Before this contract, we, I guess we looked at it as a whole, as a unit. Now, I, I haven't seen, I personally haven't seen a a number for the system, I've seen individual schools, which that's what this is based off of, so that's the reason I look at it that way. But right now, there are probably, I want to say four or maybe five that are, have been at a level two for two consecutive years.
But in, in regards to looking at that number and evaluating the Director's schools, is it an aggregate across the Board for those schools?
In the performance evaluation, I don't have one handy to see how it's written in there, but by the contract, it's per school. Not as a whole.
And one thing to keep in mind too, is they did inform us, particularly the presentation with their group there, that back when the new state, when the Governor took over and he reappointed him there, they redone the testing for the state, so they were looking at that and changing some of the testing, so some of the scores, they said, would fluctuate some, and they, and because of the rigor that they were trying to introduce into that, some of those may go down.
Yeah, but I guess what I'm trying to say is that, I mean, and that, this is a contract.
Correct.
And the element of the contract, you have to have a specific, if there's a specific number that you have to, how you come up with that number, I mean, we can't say, well, the state decided to fluctuate how they did things, I mean, there's a specific number.
The, the number three, the level three, was like middle of the road. One through five, it was the middle of the road. That's, that is a Mars, you have to explain, that's a
All schools would have to have that three.
No. I'm sorry.
The district was to have a level five, or a level three, I believe, and then we looked at the individual schools, and those individual schools didn't improve. We didn't take some steps to make those improve, then we looked at individual schools, I believe is the way we did that. Will, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, because if all of the schools are level three and above, then the district will be level three and above.
Correct.
And if one school fell below, then we would make changes, it would be the Director's ability to make changes to that school to improve it and make it go backwards.
And I think based off the state standards, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Whittingham, but the way they lined out the one through five, I mean, if you're a three, you're on target where you need to be.
Yes, that's what I was, that's what I was trying to spit out, three is maintained.
And what we did was we closely related this to what the teachers are required, the new tenure teachers. They have a three-year period that if they drop below a certain score in the state eyes, then they can lose their tenure. Correct me if I'm wrong on that.
A level three teacher shows one year's growth for that kid. If you're above that, it's more than a year's growth. If you fall below that, obviously, you're not making that year's growth, that's, that's the way that works.
Anything else, any other question? Next, approval, real quick, before we get into this, guys, there's some there's some revisions on here for budgeted items for IDEA and federal stuff, that was not sent out in your packet, probably just got it tonight. From now on, just our, our normal business, if it's not sent out in our packet, unless it's something that has to be done, or something a Board member adds to the agenda, I, I want that to go out with your packet that way, because some of these are very, some of these are very expensive items. We're talking about half-a-million-dollar budgets, everybody needs that so they can look at it, so, but those are on here tonight. But from here on out, I would, I would rather those be sent out, and after the agenda is sent out, we won't be adding them, unless it falls under our policy, what can't be added. But first off, approval of the quarterly reports, you did receive those in your packet. If anybody has any questions over those, I'm sure there's nothing ready to answer. In my packet, it's the last five pages. I need a motion to approve those quarterly reports. Motion by my case. And a second by Wayne Taylor. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Approval of compliance, TCA Section forty-nine, three, oh, one, A. That document, you should have a copy in there, the Director, aye, and aye, you've already signed that document. It just says that we certify that by October the fifteenth, that all, all students that are enrolled or immersed in required textbooks. And for those that don't have textbooks, just because the state were in, they do have textbooks, so.
Textbook is virtual, it's a virtual textbook.
That's correct, it's an online textbook, so it falls under this category as well. So I would need a motion to approve that compliance.
I do approve it.
Motion by Mitchell Stomps. Second by William Epstein. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Second is approval of the twenty-twenty Global Education Agency compliance report. That too is in your packet, and it goes hand in hand with what we just discussed. It also, it covers school days, teachers' assignments, salaries, planning times, all the administrative part of the compliance is required by state federal laws. You should have copied that as well. I need a motion to approve that, be the LEA compliance report twenty-twenty.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by William Epstein, and a second.
I'll second.
Second by my case. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Next, we have a letter of resignation from Jeffrey Fryman, effective nine, eight, twenty-twenty. Dr. Whittingham, would you please read that?
I would like to thank the Oakland County Board of Education for allowing me to serve the students of Oakland County School System. However, I am experiencing some health concerns that I need to address. For this reason, it's stress-related pressure of added caseloads. I am submitting this letter of resignation to be effective eight a.m. on September the eighth, twenty-twenty. Any monies owed to me from salary and sick slash personal leave days, please deposit into my direct deposit account. To my disregards, Jeffrey Fryman.
I would need a motion to approve that letter of resignation.
I'll make that motion, second.
Motion by Ricky Dodson and a second by Mitchell Stomps. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? These next few, the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one Consolidated Administration, Title one A, Title two A, four, IDEA, NIA Day, IDEA preschool revision, and the federal projects budget amendment. I would, I would like to, no one has any objections, I would like to go over all those together. Mr. Risa Johnson, today, training tonight, could have been here with us to provide this information to the Board. It was sent out late in the packet, so I came over Friday, and I sat down with her, and she gave me the notes on this real quick, so nobody has any objections to that, we'll just do that all together. First off is the consolidation administration, administrative revision, that's the first, first page in this. And all that is, is who gets paid out of that, that monies. If anybody has any questions, we can address that, it balances out, per knowledge, it's accurate, correct? Yes, sir.
Did we skip something here?
No, sir. You had me one of those pads right there. This is the update, probably didn't have time to plan. So consolidation administration revision, that is salaries, benefits, training, and equipment. Title one A, and a lot of us don't know this, and I, and I'm almost embarrassed to say, I didn't know what one A was. I'm almost embarrassed to say, I didn't know what One A was, but that's actually our school allocations, the monies that goes to the schools through the federal programs. There is a increase in this. These are from federal monies that were carried over from the end of last year due to school closures. So there was money left over to the federal allowance that, that we did get to carry over. The actual monies that go to schools is around the eighty-four thousand dollar mark from the federal programs. Next item on that's, it goes down to where we do online textbooks, there's twenty, twenty-eight thousand dollars. We've got to carry over twenty-four, so a lot of make that around fifty thousand dollars from week pay to subscriptions for our online accounts for curriculum. If anybody has any questions about that, I have notes on it, I can answer the best to my ability. Title Two A is professional development. We contracted with a couple of different people for math, ELA, that money's involved in this. Travel expenses for that, and roughly nine thousand dollars for equipment. Title Four, which is rural schools money. We have instructional equipment in that for twenty-nine thousand dollars, and there was some carryover of another, almost twenty-nine thousand dollars. So that totaled fifty-eight thousand dollars allocated for that. And what that goes to, most, most of that money goes to summer school, paying employees to be there for summer school programs, that type thing. The IDEA Part B. That involves special ed. The first is a very large number. We had hundred eighty thousand dollars to carry over from that, so that's been incorporated into this. Right now, Ms. Flats said there's right at twenty-nine special ed assistance that we pay out of that money, plus instructional equipment and their supplies. We contract with a speech pathologist and a physical therapist as needed. That just shows where this money's allotted there. Then down to the bottom section, that covers your bus drivers with special ed, anybody that needs a attendant or an assistant, that's where that money comes from and where it's allocated. Then the IDEA preschool revision, same thing applies to there, there was a carryover. We only have one special ed preschool room, which is house over here, A.H. Roberts. So the money's carried over, it'll total about fifty thousand dollars to that. And that does, that does also include employees. And they have a little different and a unique instructional supplies and equipment that goes along with that. And there's also, whatever contract with parents as needed. So if any, I know I went over that quick, but I, I also have a total of the numbers that were carried over, if anybody needs those. If not, I would like to group Consolidated Administration Revision, Title One A Revision, Two A Revision, Title Five Revision, IDEA Part B, and IDEA Preschool Revision, and the Federal Projects Budget Amendment. I would like to group those together and get a motion for approval. Have a motion by Ricky Dodson.
I'll second.
And a second by William Ashton. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Next, we have approval of a letter of resignation from Ms. Krista Garrett, Dr. Whittingham. We don't have a copy of that presently, so I would take a motion to entertain that letter of resignation. Motion by my case. Second by Wayne Taylor. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Next, we have a letter of resignation from Paula Smith. We don't have a copy of that as well. If, if I can entertain a motion for that.
I hope we accept it.
Accept a motion from Mitchell Stonecifer. Do I have a second? Second by my case. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Be bad to try to quit the job, nobody lets you. All right, the next item that was added was taking a bid for heat at the L.A. Baseball Fieldhouse. Before we go into that discussion, is that something we can do in-house, Dr. Whittingham?
Are we talking about just heat?
That's all that I brought up to me.
That's what brought up to me, is just the heat in there during winter months. If that's something we can do in-house, can we get a motion for that? Motion by Ricky Dodson. And a second by Mitchell Stonecifer. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Oh, well, we're not spending money, we're just taking bids.
Okay, I'm sorry. Before, before we do that, what type of heat are we talking about? We're talking about a, a.
They just told me heat, huh?
I figured a gas blower.
Propane?
Yeah, propane, whatever.
Well, let me ask. Yeah, do we have natural gas at that, over there?
I don't know if it reaches up to that point.
Well, let's, let's just, what if we get a bid for?
Electric and?
Electric and yes.
I mean, if it. Electric and natural gas.
If we're not using natural gas or propane anywhere, I probably wouldn't want to get into.
If we could have that information at the next meeting, that plenty of time. Next item on the agenda, discussion of hiring additional nurses. I know Dr. Whittingham had sent us some information back earlier about this issue. First off, we didn't even know if the school would be open or not. Ms. Jenny Smith is here. Jenny, could you come up here, please? You're sitting so far away in our seat.
Got here early for a good back sweep.
If you could, please tell the board, I guess, the duties that fall under those nurses, how many do we have? How many do we actually need? Just general information.
Well, we have four nurses, and we have seven buildings, seven schools. And over the course of time, we are having more students that have medical needs that require the assistance of a trained medical professional. And they are in more locations now than we have staff. And oftentimes, these services need to be given at about the same time often in, in relation with the meal. So we simply have more students in more places than we have staff.
Do you know approximately how many students we service daily, weekly, in your department?
No, sir. I wanted to know the ones that were, there are some things that, if there are people that are willing to volunteer to train to do, that they can help us out. But there are some services that are required that you, seriously, you want a trained medical professional. And those were the numbers that I was looking at more specifically than just everyday numbers. Every school has a need for everyday services.
Let me ask a question. I know you'd love two nurses for every student. Is there a number of nurses that, I guess, not necessarily, I'm trying to think the proper way to say it. Not necessarily have to have, but would, would it help the most? I mean, I know for every school we have the most, but
Well.
Like one, two, three, you know, what, what are we talking about here?
Well, of course, three would be ideal. Two is better than one, and one is better than what we have right now. Another in addition to what we have, I should say.
Sure.
One desperately.
So with four nurses, how do they cover this?
We have one nurse that is full-time at the high school. That is your largest population, and that is where the head orient is stationed. Depending upon the needs of the schools, meaning what students are enrolled and what the needs are at that school, is how we divide the nurses, their duties per year. What they had last year, it may change next year, which schools that they are assigned to, because we're looking at logistics. When these services need to be given, can we make it where if they go to this school, then they can make it to the next one in time, to me, all in it? As of right now, we have A.H. and Allen's are grouped together. We had to make a change at the beginning of the year. I think right now that Hillham and L.M.S. are together, and that would leave Ritten and Wilson together. I may have had to swap those two after another situation came up. But those are, we have one that is there, like I said, full-time at the high school. And sometimes, like, if there is one that's out, or let, let's say that there is a serious situation, and this nurse cannot leave until this child is stable, there would be another nurse that has to come over and leave their school and then try to go cover for another. So we are getting to the point where we are really struggling to be able to cover.
I'll make a motion that we approve the hiring of each one of our nurses.
I know, sorry, can I?
I will recognize your motion, just one second.
I know BEP, at one point, they recognized one nurse for every three thousand students, which is ridiculous. And I know the state was trying to pass like one for every seven fifty, I don't think that actually passed it. So right now, we're still getting the BEP out of one. Okay, that's all I have.
We have a motion from Wayne Taylor to approve the position of one additional nurse.
Do we have the money?
If I'm good, second, we'll have that discussion. Do I have a second for that motion? I'll second, second by my case. Now, go ahead, Mr. Ashton.
How much money do we have that we could spend on this?
Depending on how things go through the rest of the year with dealing with COVID and things like that, we never know. But the budget, the way it was approved, we probably got the money in the budget to buy for one additional nurse.
Next year. But I mean, the next school year, reoccurring it, we would have the money?
Well, again, you never know, because you don't know what's going to happen with BEP, and whether they're going to fund it as it is this year, or whether that will change in the budget next year. We do not know the answer to that at this point. I know that they have asked for a whole harmless year this year, but that would be up to the legislature.
Have we got any COVID funds yet?
As far as.
Left from the state, any funding or anything for COVID?
Not that I'm aware of. Other than the money that we got from the federal government to provide all the equipment, things like that.
You had your head turned, I didn't, you said we had funding available for one at present?
At least one, yes. I mean, we'd have to look and figure, but at least funding for that.
One thing to maybe to consider, with the addition of an extra nurse, the amount of travel that it would alleviate otherwise.
So how would it, if, if, let's say this pandemic continues to spiral back, we wind up closing the schools and going remote, how will that impact, how, how will the responsibilities of the nurses that are currently, how will that change?
Well, last year, they helped, they came to the schools, like, when they were handing out the meals. They were there, and like, for some of the students, they were there as well, and talking with some of the parents as they had concerns, especially with as COVID was coming out. But whatever that, they are, however they are needed.
In my opinion, if you're ever going to increase your nurses in your school system during a pandemic, it's the time that you need to do it. You cannot wait till a pandemic is over and then try to consider it.
Well, in another situation that happened to us earlier this year, we had four nurses. And because of quarantine situations, we lost half of the nursing staff right at the beginning of the year. So we actually had two nurses trying to cover.
This being an LBN or a RA physician?
I'm assuming it's been LBN since we, we've always one RN.
That's what we used to.
So I would assume so.
And how many LPNs can we have under the one RN? I know we discussed.
I'm not sure, give me, you know, answer that, how many LPNs can serve under that one RN?
I know at one time we talked about it, but I don't remember the number.
You know, I know a guy from the state, did they give you those?
For training purposes? It was talked about when we, because a while back, we had talked about trying to get nurses in every school. I believe it was probably two years after I was on the board, so two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, we talked about trying to find a contract for the hospital or something where we could get a nurse in every single school and try to supplement with the hospital, and them paying some of the staff, and us paying some, like we do the SRO officers. And for the training purposes, you had to have one RN for so many LPNs. To do training, on-site training, it's different factors.
And that might be correct, so the training may be issued. If we, if, if it works out that we had more than were allotted, we would just have to have outside training for our, our personnel instead of winning a dead last, nothing. Yes, that would be different, I believe. And I, I don't recall the exact number. Anybody else got any questions? Okay, so the motion was to hire, or to hire at least one additional nurse. Had a motion by Wayne Taylor, and a second by my case, and please get a roll call though.
Mike Hayes?
Yes.
Doc Skye?
Yes.
Wayne Taylor?
Yes.
William Ashton?
Yes.
Larry Looper?
Yes.
Mitch Stonecifer?
Yes.
Rick Dodson?
Yes.
Jarman Hicks?
Yes.
Mike Hillpatrick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next we have the recognition of TCA, Ms. Alender.
Good evening. I just have to report that the teachers are working really hard. The biggest frustration that I've had reported to me is the loss of our duty free lunch. That's been really, really hard on everybody. I know that it's one of those things that couldn't be avoided, but we want you to remember us when we can fix that, because that's, that's been really, really hard on the kids and the teachers. Other than that, our thoughts and concerns are with Dr. Sager and her illness. We hope she's back with us soon. That's all I have.
That's all we have on the agenda. I will take a motion to adjourn. A motion by William Ashton, and a second by Wayne Taylor. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Anybody need to take a break, or want to take a break before we go into our work session? The last few weeks, we have discussed the five-year district plan. We, as a board, developed this plan last year. Is this one where we met down at the, the Board of Oakland? We set out these goals. Our new, you guys, you guys did receive a copy of this?
Yeah.
Okay. So I guess, I guess my first comment on this, if anybody has anything that we need to address or want to address, we will need to get together and go over that. Now, with that said, that falls into the next discussion, the board member retreat. We can set a date and do a district plan. We've had a retreat before and just kind of outlined what we wanted to put in that. We, we've had a retreat before and just kind of outlined what we wanted to put in that plan and then got together and made the plan. So, uh, whatever you guys want to do, uh, if you guys want to wait till after the first of the year when maybe the illness dies down and it's not so socially awkward, uh, we can do that. So, uh, just something to think about, uh, nothing we have to take action on right now. But please look over that. We will try to, and as you look over it, uh, just make your notes. That way, when we do sit down, whatever needs updating, we can update it, we can update it. Whatever needs changes, we can change. And between us and the director, we will review or revise that five-year plan. Anybody got any questions about the plan or? Okay, good enough. Uh, next we have, uh, the board member retreat. We used to try to do that October, maybe? We used to try to do a retreat around the October timeframe, uh, with everything that's going on, that's not really been the best idea. So you guys want to wait till after the first of the year and have a board retreat where we can sit down and go over these things?
I do.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, for maybe, I don't know, we'll play later. We'll do February to March. Is that good with everybody? That'll get us through Christmas and the holidays and, uh, then we can see where we'll be at on the pandemic and social distancing and things of that nature. Only other thing, I've got just a couple of things on this work session. Well, I got through my notes. Does anybody have anything for the work session?
I got two.
Go ahead.
One, I got a text from Dr. Whittingham. I was crazy with work this week, but apparently the structural engineer came and gave a recommendation on the current football field.
What he told me on Friday was that the home side is a little more structurally sound than the visitor side. The visitor side needs some work and it needs to be done as soon as possible. That's on the existing schedule. He explained all that, why it's that way on the visitor side. There's just one row of blocks apparently supporting those. On the home side, there's two rows of block, well, actually three rows of blocks supporting that on the, on the home side. And, um, he has, uh, is going to draw up some specs and, uh, have a, um, estimate on what the repairs for that cost.
Okay, which leads me to number two. So I've got a meeting the thirteenth with the budget committee for the county to discuss the plans that I rolled out to you all the last meeting. So it's going to go to the budget committee first, then if we get approval, then I'll go to the county court on October nineteenth. So, uh, I guess in the meantime, we can wait on his specs from that. Then, you know, fingers crossed, if we do get approval, then we can kind of look at options there. Because if it's going to be two years and maybe instead of spending money, hey, what about getting somebody in there just to tear that visitor side down and leave it? Instead of spending money and building it back up, but obviously if we have to look at different options, then we'll have to look at those options there, so.
October nineteenth, maybe?
The October thirteenth is the first one. And that'll be at five twenty, and that'll be with the budget committee.
Depending on how that goes, then we'll go the nineteenth.
Thirteenth is what?
Five twenty.
Five twenty?
Yep. I think that's a lot of time on there agenda.
Okay. Mike will be going to that. Uh, I'm a seven. We'll be trying to attend. Dr. Whittingham, you'll be there for that? Next thing, uh, the, uh, as basketball season starts, uh, I've got two things to go over about that. Set through a game last night at Hillham Elementary. That went well. They sold limited tickets for, uh, the opposing side and the home team. That went well. Majority of the, the people wore masks. The question that, uh, came to me from, uh, well, it came to me from actually our county government, uh, how will we be addressing the social distancing at the high school? Uh, because right now, football is outside and it's sheltered, sheltered over there with no masks and no, no type of social distancing. So how will we be addressing the inside the gym?
At the high school?
Yes.
Now, I could be telling you wrong. The way I understand it, they're going to be, just like your elementary's, they're going to be fifty percent capacity. And I would think the expectation is that they will, um, how you really section that off, if you have a family of five coming into the game, it's hard to section five seats off, and then, but it should be just like the middle of the games.
But I, I would think with a high school with those little bleachers on the far side, as big as they are, which usually they use that for the visitors anyway. I mean, I would think there'd be ample amount of room to spread out. Now, you may have to limit, like you said, the ticket sales and kind of monitor that so you're not having.
And the, and the reason I go into that is, uh, I spoke with the chief of police. Uh, he and the sheriff, uh, during a principal's meeting or sometime would like to come over and sit down and meet. That way, they know what the expectations are. If, uh, if it's something they need to be involved in, they want to be on the same page and they wish that everything's done the same at every school. Now, with that said, I guess that'd be, how you, you guys handle that?
Mr. Sales may have some additional information regarding that.
We did the one-third capacity, which is T double S double A's recommendation. High school will be six hundred seats this year. And the football club done the same thing. He actually moved students out of the bleachers to increase in capacity for both sides. And I was there, um, it's, we done the mask, we did this, everything we signs everywhere and it still has some areas where there's issues. But secondary to high school.
Good, thank you. Those two, they want to be, and, and I guess you're voting to be there as well, Wayne, during that meeting. That way, they, they just want to be on the same page with everybody, uh, they want to know what to expect from the schools and they want schools to know what to expect from them.
How many go on the other side of the grade school then?
That, that varies because the gyms aren't the same size. Last night, there was a hundred and fifty seats at Hillham. And when I say a hundred and fifty seats, that was through two games. That was not a hundred and fifty seats at one time. Uh, as they played the girls' game, after that was over, tho- those group of parents and family, they left. The boys' team, their family and parents, they came in and replaced that.
You want to get sixty in the middle school.
Yeah, I mean, it's. So, uh, and I guess the biggest concern is just making sure everybody's parents are there to see their kids, you know, before. Before kids are, you know, before students or extended family or anything is.
That's what a lot of people ask questions about.
Yeah, so the, but those two, the sheriff and the chief of police, they, they will be in some type of meeting, uh, before the season gets really underway. And the next thing I have, this will be real quick, uh, I'm trying to find a date real quick. October the thirtieth at twelve o'clock noon, uh, Dr. Whittingham, there'll be a, uh, COVID nineteen, uh, community briefing. We will need you, Savage, or Ms. Smith, to coordinate school help, uh, there to address that briefing with the, uh, I, I assume it'll be the same, the health department, uh, L R H, uh, county executive. I believe it'd be at the Chamber of Commerce. We could have somebody there to answer questions, to give a briefing on that.
I saw the text with Rickland had a few. Is that the only ones that's kind of?
Wilson.
Wilson.
Anybody, anything else for the work session? All right, work session's over. Thank you.